City manager will say the invocation. And I would like Councilmember John O'Neil to do the, um, bless. Thank you.
Everyone, please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we gather here today, may we be guided by a spirit of unity and understanding. May we engage in respectful and fruitful discussions, embracing our differences and working towards our shared goals. And may our shared purpose guide our discussions, and may our collective efforts lead to impactful and transformative outcomes. Amen.
Thank you. If you would help join me in my pledge of allegiance, if you could remove your caps for me and help us pledge our allegiance to the greatest symbol of freedom in the world.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, um, we reset to the city council meeting. And we're gonna pass to Chair Kim Nguyen Pinalosa to convey the housing authority meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. May I please get a roll call?
Member Brightigum?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
I'm sorry. Commissioner, I'm sorry. Commissioner, Commissioner Jones? I'm sorry.
Redo, start all over.
Senior moment, okay. Sorry. I've got three people in a row who are completely absent from the roll call. Commissioner Klaffenstein?
I am here.
Commissioner Tanwin?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Tran?
Here.
Vice Chair Brightigum?
Here.
And Chair Nguyen Pinalosa?
Here.
And Commissioner Beckles, Commissioner Dovin, and Commissioner Jones are all absent this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment during the housing authority meeting? Seeing none, I'll move right along. We have two items for consent.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Motion received. That's four.
Well, he doesn't have a device.
Okay. Oh, correct. Sorry. Another senior moment. Okay. This is an oral roll call, sorry. Commissioner Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Tanwin?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil? Commissioner Tran?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brightigum?
Yes.
Chair Nguyen Pinalosa?
Yes.
Motion received. That would be five yes votes. Six yes votes, sorry.
Thank you very much. And are there any matters from commissioners? Seeing none, I'll adjourn the meeting and turn it over back to Mayor Protem for City Council.
Thank you. So tonight, we are pleased to recognize the Pacifica High School softball team with a community spotlight. So, City Court, please read the title.
Tonight's community spotlight is in recognition of Pacifica High School softball team for winning the CIF Southern Division One Championship. And Ms. Luna Reynosa will read the community spotlight tonight.
This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize Pacifica High School softball team for winning the CIF Southern Section Division One Championship. With the Pacifica High School softball team and coaches Tony Ardoino, Joseph Alvarez, Ryan Dickinson, Neil Lockett, Randy Frazman, Brian Kleek, and Mariah Sandoval, please come forward. For five years, Tony?
Should get the girls up there, too.
Yeah, come on up, girls. For five years, Tony Ardoino has been coaching the Pacifica High School softball team and was recently named the 2024 All CIF Southern Section Championship Coach of the Year. At the start of the season, at the start of the season, the Mariners were ranked as the number one high school softball team in Orange County, California, and the United States. Expectations were at an all-time high, but the team faced the additional pressure by blocking out the noise and remaining focused, said Coach Tony Ardoino. The Mariners finished the Empire League with a perfect 10-win record and ended the overall season with 27 wins and two losses. Recently, they won the CIF Southern Section Division One Championship against Orange Lutheran High School, three to zero. With this win under their belt, the Mariners sealed their Orange County Record Ninth Section Title and made Pacifica High School history by winning the first back-to-back CIF Southern Section Division One Championship. The road to becoming CIF champions was not easy. Still, the team persevered and received many accolades along the way, including winning the 28th Annual Dave Kopp's Tournament of Champions in Bullhead City, Arizona, and being named the 2024 California State Softball Team of the Year by Cal High Sports. As Coach Tony Ardoino reflects on the season, he says, "I would like to thank all the players, coaches, parents, maintenance staff, administration, and community for their support all season. Champions are a team effort, and there is no way Pacifica is back-to-back CIF champions without everyone pulling in the same direction with the same goal." At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present the Pacifica High School softball team and coaches with certificates for winning the CIF Southern Section Division One Championship. Congratulations. We wish all of them the very best in their future athletic endeavors.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Yeah, we won a three-peat.
Thank you so much. Um, next one, we have the Garden Grove Police Department have teamed up with the Orange County Department to provide an update.
Mayor Protem and council members, good evening. I have Lieutenant Charlie Lothar, who will provide our deployment efforts for this upcoming Fourth of July.
Thank you.
Greetings. As, uh, as we know, Fourth of July is rapidly approaching. So, uh, without further ado, for the deployment, I'm just gonna go through the slides and kinda explain what we've done so far this year, uh, preparing for the deployment. First of all, we're monitoring various websites for the sales of illegal fireworks. As of now, I know our Special Investigations Unit and our Gang Suppression Unit has already brought in, uh, thousands of fireworks, uh, through undercover operations and also through search warrants. Uh, the pictures weren't, uh, as exciting as this one. They were, uh, they were boxed up in crates, so you really, uh, I believe the bomb squad came out and grabbed those, so we really didn't screw with those, so, um, continuing here. Uh, for our deployment this year and for the City Garden Grove, there are thirty firework stands. They have all been approved by our, for firework sales between July first and July fourth. OCFA personnel will be conducting inspections on July first between 10:00 and 2:00 p.m. As, uh, years passed, block parties are still being approved for the fourth. I believe we have a total of fourteen of them this year. Uh, each block party will be inspected on July fourth to ensure their compliance and will be monitored throughout the evening. Uh, block party permits cost $136.50, and, uh, this cost covers the administrative cost for the permit and the cost for two police officers to inspect each permitted block party to ensure safety and compliance. This year's deployment, um, we have two sergeants, twenty-eight officers, two community soft officers, and yours truly, one lieutenant. This is a little bit about, uh, the laws related to, uh, illegal fireworks and the discharge. Uh, Safe and Saint fireworks are permitted on July fourth between 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. As you may know, discharging and possession of illegal fireworks, which would be like the mortars, M-80s and such, uh, will result in a thousand-dollar citation, administrative citation. Use of illegal fireworks, and you will get a, uh, citation or multiple, depending on the situation. Little bit about fireworks. Uh, do not discharge fireworks in city parks or open spaces. The city parks are closing at 5:00 p.m., and as the years pass, they run the sprinklers to ensure that, uh, the parks don't catch on fire if we get one that, uh, gets wayward on us. So this year, we've done press releases, uh, websites. Uh, they're continuing all the way up through the fourth. You're gonna see these on the website, social, uh, social media. Um, uh, through the police department and OCFA, we've given information about animal care. This phone number is still the hotline if you wanna report, uh, firework-related incident or, uh, a tip. Out in the public, we put up park banners, over-the-street banners, digital signboard, social media, Garden Grove Channel Three, press release, water bill, uh, flyer, fire, at the firework stands of various community-accessible locations. And we have an addition this year, I'll get into that later, uh, additional, uh, things that we did. These are a little bit, this is what the banners and flyers and fireworks and stuff look like. That's the water bill where, the little message about the fireworks on there. Here's our flyer that typically goes out. This is the one that we sent out this year. Uh, general safety tips. Uh, these are, some of these are no brainers, but do not light any fireworks near combustible vegetation. Soak all discharged fireworks in a bucket prior to disposing. Keep trash cans away from combustible structures. This year, we have, uh, we, we've received some complaints over the years about projectiles, which includes water balloons. Uh, we want people to have fun, and water balloons, including however, unfortunately, there's been, uh, incidents where people that don't want to be involved in the, the water balloons and/or unsuspecting victims, we'll call them. Uh, people have been getting hurt, basically, that, uh, unentalved victims, that, uninvolved victims that don't know the, the water balloons are being thrown in their direction. Uh, we've taken several measures to ensure the safety of its residents as it relates to unwanted projectile water balloons. The following mailer, after this slide, slide was sent out, uh, via social media to social media sites. Over the past weekend, our entire Explorer Post went out to several areas within the city, uh, including West Garden Grove targeted areas with over seven hundred flyers, door-to-door knocking, and educating the public on both illegal fireworks and how even water balloons could become illegal projectiles after being thrown at unintended victims. Additional, uh, police officers on that list of, in our deployment, four officers in marked units will be dedicated specifically to, for high visibility and to deal with issues as they relate to projectiles being thrown, any projectile. Here's a flyer that, uh, we passed out over the weekend, and also that's gonna be continuing through social media through the Fourth of July. And this is a new flyer for this year. Uh, any questions? And please feel free to reach out to me prior to the Fourth of July. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody, any of you or anybody in the public wish to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll just reiterate real quick, Lieutenant Lothar, what you said. This has been our most robust messaging campaign that we've done in, uh, recent years. So we've certainly gotten out of the message to our community. We know we're a very patriotic community here in Garden Grove, but we want them to have fun in a safe, respectful manner to their neighbors, to people who are visiting our community, because we don't want any mishaps. And, and that's what we really need, the neighbors to get out to each other. Uh, I will tell you, I know we said we had twenty-eight officers. Those are officers specifically assigned to the fireworks detail. When you take the totality of all the officers deployed that day, we have well over a hundred officers working on the Fourth of July in our city, just so you're aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make one quick comment?
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to thank you and everyone that's working that day, OCFA members and the Garden Grove Police Department, those people that gave up, you know, somebody has to work, and so we appreciate them being out there and giving up their day with their family. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Yeah, um, thank you again. Um, I know you guys have really stepped forward, PD, this year. A lot of those complaints from the water balloons come from my district, and, uh, you know, we've had some tragedies in past years because of the water balloons, and quite frankly, it's made it where it's less fun for people to, don't even wanna participate in anything anymore because they're afraid they're gonna get pelted with water balloons. I know we had an old guy sent, um, oh geez, I, I think he was in his seventies, on a bike that got sent to the hospital 'cause he was pelted with water balloons against his will. He was just trying to, you know, right, and people with golf carts getting pelted with water balloons and this kind of thing, so thank you for stepping up in that messaging component that you guys have been doing. So I, I know the community's been really kinda hollering at me to make sure that gets out and, and I kinda push it down, but really, thank you guys for all your hard work.
Absolutely.
Um, also, just thank you again for the robust messaging campaign, and I also really appreciate um, that you've been able to, uh, just bring awareness about the animals. We all know that that's such a big issue on the Fourth of July, and making sure that they're tagged and microchipped and that there's the safety precautions in place, so thank you for that as well.
Just wanna say, uh, thank you very much. Again, very grateful. Ditto on the pets. I have a dog who hates fireworks, who will be under the bed, in the bathroom, in the bathtub, or whatever, clawing at the door, trying to escape the scary noises, so, um, I hate the Fourth of July as a result of that because then I can't go anywhere and do anything. I have to, like, lock down and make really loud noise to kind of circumvent the fireworks. Um, and they're already started, right? I feel like they start earlier and earlier every year now, and it just sounds like bombs are going off everywhere. Um, but I just also wanna highlight, um, really great job on the social media. I've heard kudos from other agencies and other electives as well. Um, in particular, messaging around, um, how it could affect PTSD for other military service, um, officers or et cetera, so just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, all the council already mentioned that, but I also want to say thank you and thank to the officer that gave up their time and, you know, be there just to make sure that we have a safe July fourth, so thank you. So the next part is the, um, oral communication. I have only one call here, so, um, Leland Six, please come up.
Mayor Protem, city council members, and this awesome city staff. In April of this year, I addressed this body about the increased speed limit on, uh, Ninth Street, um, between Orangewood and Chapman. The speed limit was increased from thirty-five to forty miles per hour, all right? I related that the, this city's traffic engineer told me that increasing the speed limit was required since the eighty-fifth percentile of traffic on Ninth Street exceeded the posted speed limit. I found that justification to be lacking. Last week, I came across an article published on a website, www.voicofoc.org. If you've never heard of it, you should read it sometime. Uh, this article revealed that Assembly Bill Forty-three passed in 2021 gives cities more control over the speed at which motorists can drive. And based on Assembly Bill Forty-three, the city of Anaheim commissioned a traffic survey for that city. Because of that survey, Anaheim is lowering the speed limit on one hundred and sixty-nine segments of roadway between five to fifteen miles per hour. One hundred and fifty-eight streets will remain unchanged, and no street will see a speed increase. This article also had a li, link to a list of streets and where these changes are being made. Might wanna look at it. It should be noted that on those portions of Orangewood Avenue, between Euclid and Harbor, that are within the city limits of Anaheim, the speed limit will be lowered from thirty-five to thirty. That portion of Ninth Street in Anaheim, north of Orangewood, will remain at thirty-five, but when you cross Orangewood, that speed limit is thirty, until you get to partial Ninth Street in Garden Grove, then it jumps up to forty. Ridiculous. Per Mr. Cobain, traffic engineer for the city of Anaheim, quote, "Transportation experts today widely reject the notion that the eighty-fifth percentile is the safest speed." Additionally, studies have shown that there is a direct correlation between the speed of a vehicle and the severity of a collision, end quote. So, with the changes that are now being implemented in Anaheim, how does the speed limit increase on Ninth Street look in retrospect? In my humble opinion, it looks just as dangerous and just as ridiculous as it always did. Lower the speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to address the council? Okay. No one else here, so follow the oral communication. We're gonna reset the city council meeting and hand off to Vice Chair John O'Neil to convene the successor agency meeting.
Okay. Successor agency, uh, let me go ahead and, I'd like to call the, uh, Garden Grove City Successor Agency to order. Uh, if the clerk could please call the roll.
Member, member Brightigum?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen Pinalosa?
Here.
And Vice Chair O'Neil?
Here.
And Member Dovin and Chair Jones are absent tonight.
Thank you. Uh, we've already held oral communications simultaneously with other bodies. Um, all we have tonight is a consent calendar for receive and file the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Motion?
A second.
And a second. Uh, please call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn till the next meeting, Tuesday, July ninth, uh, 2024, in this room. We're gonna go right over to sanitary district, which I'll go ahead and take care of that, too.
Thank you.
If we could please call the roll for the Garden Grove Sanitist, uh, sanitary district board of directors.
Member Brightigum?
Here.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen Pinalosa?
Here.
Vice President Tran?
Yeah.
President O'Neil?
Here.
And Member Dovin and Member Jones are absent tonight.
Thank you very much. Uh, we've already held oral communications simultaneously with other bodies. Uh, we do have, uh, one item for receive and file the minutes for on the consent calendar. Can I get a motion on that?
Minutes?
Okay. I've got a motion to move the consent. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Okay, a second. Uh, please call for the vote. Thanks.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, we do have one item for consideration tonight. This is, I'll let the clerk, uh, the, uh, read the, read the matter.
This is adoption of a resolution to authorize the imposition of liens on parcels with delinquent payments for refuse collection and disposal service charges. And Ms. Song is here to give that report.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mr. President and the members of the board. This item is continued from our last board meeting, when we conducted a public hearing to initiate a lien imposition processed on properties with delinquent trash service payments. And tonight, I have four, um, representatives from Republic Services here to answer any questions you may have or any questions from the public. So during last board meeting, you have asked us to research on parcels with multiple-year delinquencies and if those property owners were properly notified in prior years. We have since discussed this with Republic Services and identified that there were some reporting issues that caused the parcels missing from prior year's list, and some property owners were not notified until this year. So to provide all property owners with the same fair treatment, and due to the time constraint that we're facing to submit our records to the county this year, Republic Services has agreed to remove all liens that are over one-year-old from this current list that is in front of you tonight. So, right now, you're looking at a revised parcel list with delinquent amounts for just fiscal year 2023-24. Republic Services will further investigate the older balances and decide the best approach to recover the service charges. If the delinquent amounts are caused by property owners, Republic will attempt to collect those during the year, and if they remain unpaid around this time next year, it will, it could be filed with the county as a lien. And if the delinquent amounts were caused by non-owner occupants and the service recipients are no longer residing in the property, Republic Services will use collection agency to recover the funds, and the aged, aged delinquent amounts will not reappear on next year's lien list, and it would not become a burden of the property owners. So per state statutes, we will need five affirmative votes from you tonight in order to send the list to the county and to put it on the property tax roll for collection, uh, for fiscal year 2023-24, delinquencies. And with that, I, uh, like to ask you to take some actions and authorize us to proceed with this, this action.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for everyone's patience and all the work that's been done in the last two weeks to get to this point. I think everything has been addressed. And, but at this time, uh, I'll go to my colleagues. Any other questions regarding the staff report or any comments before we entertain a motion?
Yeah, I do have a comment. Um, you know, traditionally, this comes up every year, and, and we kinda have the similar issues every year. Public will utilize this board as the sounding board for people, and they send a letter, and they say, "Go to the council meeting and if you got an issue." But reality is, all, all these people can do is come in at public comments and say they disagree with it, and there's nothing we can do to interact with them. So, um, I really think that's a poor, poorly thought-out system. We brought this up in previous years. I know, uh, when I first got elected, I think, uh, Councilwoman Kim Nguyen Pinalosa brought it up, too. It's, it doesn't seem like a very equitable, um, way to do things. So, quite frankly, I think we need to rethink how that's done. And that letter that goes out to people saying, "We're gonna put a lien on your house," and this and that. Um, and then I was really disappointed that nobody from Republic was here. So they send out a letter from Republic on behalf of the city saying, "Come to the city council meeting if you have any problems," but then nobody from Republic is here for them to talk to. Um, we had three or four people come to the comments. I actually turned one guy away, unfortunately. I, he came in and I told him, "It's just a city council meeting. There's nothing that, other than, you know, public comments," and so he left. So unfortunately, he wasn't able to leave his name, and so I don't know if he was able to get that resolved. So I, I think we really need to rethink this system. Maybe a meeting with Republic personnel should be the first contact where they can interact with them and say, "Hey, our records show this," and they can resolve ninety-nine percent of the issues before they come here to the council to complain, um, or some kind of system like that. But this current system, it's been going on too long and it's dysfunctional, and it's not fair. So I really think Republic and the city staff need to get together and come up with a, a better way of, you know, a better mousetrap. So with that being said, um, I'm glad that they were able to re, resolve a lot of this issue, especially the old ones that, you know, three years, people didn't even know that they owed money, and, um, so I, I will support it now that it's been remedied, but this, you know, we need to fix this system. It's, it's a broken system. It needs to be fixed. And with that, I'll make the motion.
A motion. Other comments or a second?
I'll make the second, but I also have a few comments. First, I want to thank Republic Services for coming in full force tonight. Although we would have preferred it the other meeting, I do, well, thank you for coming and thank you for putting in the work to find solutions to the issues that were brought up. Um, I think when we went through the exercise of going through, um, reviewing the contract and, and awarding you the contract again after so many years, I, I think one of the main things that I kept bringing up was auditing, you know, making sure we have metrics and tying back to those and making sure that where there are gaps, where there are mistakes, that we are fixing them. And I think this is one prime example of a case in which you just did that, so I do wanna thank you. I know not everything's gonna be perfect. Mistakes are gonna happen. Sometimes they're gonna be big and glaring. Sometimes it's gonna be small. Um, but anytime we've brought it up and brought up an issue that we've had with Republic Service, Services, you guys have been really quick to find a solution, so I wanna thank you for that as well. Um, I think we get frustrated because individuals come here and get mad at us, and we're, we're just the, you know, the mediator of a situation we have no control over, so it gets frustrating for us, 'cause it happens every single year. Um, this year was, out of the eight years we've been doing this, I think this was the first time we've had people come that didn't get anything for three years and then all of a sudden, uh, received that they were delinquent, so that was a big shocker, but now you know that's a problem. Hopefully, whatever you put in place will allow for that to not happen again. Um, I know that I had asked a question at the last meeting to see if the folks that came last night had been on our list previous years, and that was not the case, and I think that that's being, um, figured out on your guys' end. Um, at some point, if we could get a, um, up-to-date or a status-up At some point, if we could get a up-to-date or a status update on how you guys are resolving that for future meetings, that way we know what to look out on, for on our end as well. Because I think our staff is just a surprise when we get comments like that. We're not expecting it. But otherwise, I just want to say thank you for working with our staff and working to find solutions for those glaring issues.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll just say to finalize, we do have a motion, a second. It comes up every year. It is a difficult situation, but the reason it's set up this way, it's, it's a public health and safety risk to not have the trash picked up. So that's why it's set up this way. So it, I just encourage everybody to make sure that, that they pay their bills, you know, and if they have any complications with that, please contact Republic about paying your bill on time. If you're a landlord, I would consider building that into my rent and taking that bill upon myself when there's a possible lien against my property, which you would ultimately be responsible for. So, you know, maybe you build that into the rent so you're not relying on a tenant that may not pay it and then you end up with a lien on your, your property. But with that said, we have a motion and a second. Comment, I'm sorry.
One quick comment. So just want to say thank you for working with our staff and come up with the solution that kind of makes sense. And so that is something that, I mean, of course, I did not like the fact that, like, Councilmember George already mentioned that we, you just rely on us to do the work that you were supposed to be here to talk to the resident. And so, but that in the past, I just want to say that thank you for working with us and hopefully the people out there see the solution and see, you know, what we try to accomplish here. So that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. One more comment?
Sorry, before we move on, I just want to, should we see if they want to make any comments? They came out this way. And we were all talking about solutions that I don't think were shared with the public. So I don't know if they have prepared remarks to make. Don't worry about it, I'm just saying.
We can move forward. Well, we definitely appreciate you coming out. I mean, that, we all understand where we're at now and I think next year will be much better. So thank you for your continued work, especially on the route changes and everything you guys have done. It's really stepped up. I, I've seen the improvement on, even though it was a little changing some routes around, people were a little, their times changed. So I had neighbors and people that would bring out their cans in the morning and then they realized the truck didn't come exactly at the same time because they changed the route around. But then I explained to them, "Oh, they're just going through a, a change." So we appreciate everything you're doing there. We do have a motion and a second. If there's no other comment, I'll call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from board members? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn until the next scheduled meeting for Tuesday. The screen just changed on me.
Oh, sorry. July twenty-third.
What was it, July what?
July twenty-third.
July twenty-third. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming out. Appreciate it. At that, we're done with sanitary. We'll go ahead and pass that back over to city council.
Okay, so the next part will be the consent item. So, does anyone like to pull any item from the consent calendar? Yay. Yes.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Now we go to item number fourteen for consideration. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title for item fourteen?
Item fourteen is award contracts and authorize the issuance of purchase orders for asphalt products as needed to All American Asphalt, Calmat Company, Doing Businesses Vulcan Materials Company, Western Division, and RJ Noble Company. And Mr. Kim is here tonight to give that report.
Give me some more. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, tonight's city council is being asked to award contracts to All American Asphalt, Vulcan Material Company, and RJ Noble Company to purchase asphalt products for will-call and delivery on as-needed basis. The city has a continual and growing need for asphalt and related supplies to be delivered to various job sites throughout the city for ongoing street improvements. It is common for projects to overlap in timelines that could cause a delay when the city's contracted vendor has a full or conflicted schedule. The delay could become costly due to the time and risk associated with quoting individual jobs to vendors. Therefore, it is necessary for the city to contract with multiple asphalt providers to avoid delays. Based on past experiences, it is also necessary to have the asphalt providers to be in close proximity to provide reliable hot mix asphalt at the required temperature to improve cost efficiency during the street project. Three asphalt providers were selected and will be used on an as-needed basis. The invitation for bids were, I mean, invitation for bids was issued on April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, and three bids were received and opened on May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. All three bids were found to be responsive. The contract amounts were ranked by the lowest to highest bidder for asphalt products per ton, including the contractor's ability to meet the city's needs and guarantee pricing for one-year period of the contract. The bid results are shown in the attached bid tabulation report. Annual spending among the three contracts will not exceed nine hundred thousand dollars. Actual vendors will be selected based on availability with the lower-cost vendor be the first choice. Funding, funding is included in the Public Works Street Division Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-five amended operating budget. It is recommended that city council award one-year contracts to All American Asphalt in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars, Falcon Material Companies in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars, and RJ Noble Companies in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to provide asphalt products for will-call and delivery on an as-needed basis. And also authorize the city manager to execute the contracts on behalf of the city and to make a minor contract modification as needed. This concludes the staff report and staff is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any question?
I'll move it.
Can I call for the vote, please?
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, Madam Clerk, would you please read the title for item fifteen?
Item number fifteen is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number two nine five five, which is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council, the City of Garden Grove, Establishing the Amount of Money for Paramedic Services That Must Be Raised by an Adverbalum Tax Override and the Setting of the Tax Rate of Said Override."
This is second reading, so we're just gonna call for the vote, right?
I'll make a motion to move it.
Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Item number sixteen, Madam Clerk, would you please read the title for item sixteen?
Item number sixteen is a crime prevention presentation as requested by city manager Kim. I believe the chief is here to give that overview.
Good evening. First, I'd like to acknowledge our community liaison division who developed this PowerPoint for us tonight. What you'll see is we've been, this is a philosophy from the problem-oriented policing. It's called the crime triangle. And, and the idea behind it is you have the three sides of the triangle, the offender, the place, the target, the victim. If you can remove one of those, then you've succeeded because then crime won't exist. So that is kind of the philosophy we use, but we utilize that under CERA project. And you may have heard that acronym. And CERA stands for Scanning Analysis Response and Assessment. So right now we have two CERA projects active in our city, the Chapman and Gilbert area and Harbor and Trask. And if you look up on your screen, you'll see the problems that have been occurring in those areas. We've had officers within our departments, various units, also working with various city entities, targeting those areas and having kind of a no-tolerance approach. I will tell you, I went up to Chapman and Gilbert myself today. We painted out the graffiti in that area. Over the last ten days, we've made twenty-three arrests from various low-level arrests from possession of narcotics, possession of paraphernalia, trespassing warrants. And the same over at Harbor and Trask, we've made fourteen arrests over the last ten days. So we've been very proactive, also working with code enforcement in the area of Chapman and Gilbert to have some of those dilapidated businesses kind of get up to code. And I know also, you know, when we think long-term and we're talking about that is, that's when we get our community development team. And I know they're working on trying to get new ideas to revitalize the area. And that will certainly make an impact. It, it kind of goes along with that broken windows philosophy. So there's a lot of effort going on. We focused on those areas for about thirty days. We capture all the data. We look at it. We reassess at the end of it. And if we need to continue enforcement, we will. If not, we just keep that data for future use if the problem reoccurs. But I think slowly we're seeing a positive impact in both those areas. We want to talk to you guys about catalytic converter thefts. I know Councilmember Bredegum actually did a community event where he had individuals from our community have the ability to have their VIN numbers engraved on the catalytic converters. Some members came out, but that is one of the avenues we suggest because it helps us when we go to these body shops. There are task force out there that go to the body shops and look at these catalytic converters to see if they were stolen. You can add a metal covering plate to the catalytic converter theft, obviously car alarms. And then we always talk about environmental design where you park your car, you know, not in a dark, poorly lit alley, but obviously on a street where there's some street lights or in your driveway with a well-lighted area. So that's some general ideas for our community on catalytic converters. They threw in the computers phishing scams because unfortunately this does happen. We get a lot of people coming to our front desk saying they became victims of this. So we just want to remind the public to, you know, to be a little bit cynical, to be quite frank, right? If, if, if it makes you nervous, delete the email or hang up the phone and call directly to your credit card company or your bank. Never give out your full social security number over the phone. Never give out your PIN over the phone unless you're the one who's made the call and confirm that you're actually dealing with an agent of the corporation that you need to talk to. So we just want everyone to be aware. Unfortunately, these criminals, they target elderly people a lot. And, and you know, there are safeguards in place with the financial institutions of our community, but we still need to be diligent and remind them to protect themselves at all times. Hitting cameras, this made the news locally. One of our community members was a victim of this. It's a new trend from criminals. They come up with these little cameras, they put them in the bushes and then they monitor what that resident is doing. So they can kind of develop a plan of attack, if you will, to burglarize the home. If they see a method that, you know, a time of day where the victim is constantly gone and they target that. So really this comes down to environmental design and just being diligent in your own home, right? Keep shrubbery trimmed back. Lighting is one of the best things. You should do a sweep of your yard. I hate to say it nowadays, we have to be more diligent now than ever. If you see people in your neighborhood that don't belong, we want you to call us. I know sometimes people say they're, "I didn't want to bother the police," but you're not bothering us. That's our job. We want to come out there. We want to identify them. We get field information cards on them and it helps with, with future investigations. And then these are just the five basic principles of environmental design, the, the natural access control, surveillance, cameras. You got the Ring camera, which is very good, lots of great stuff. You can go to your local Costco and get some surveillance cameras for a reasonable price. They talk about territorial enforcement, maintenance of your yard, and then just neighbors looking out for each other because that's what it comes down to. Neighbors need to look out for each other. Tell your neighbor if you're going on vacation. And even here at the PD, we have our volunteers in policing with that will do vacation checks if you do go on vacation and will monitor your home for you while you're away. So those are just some basic things on crime prevention techniques and some of our efforts on those problem areas in our city. And I'm open to any questions if you should have any.
Thank you, Chief. Does anyone? Go ahead, Kim.
Thanks, Chief. I really appreciate it, City Manager Kim, for bringing this forward. I know that I had a lot of concerns at one of our previous meetings and thought that this would be a good idea. And I'd love to add more work to your plate and have a suggestion. For those slides that you had, if you could convert them into images for social media to post, you know, like tips for specifically for the hidden cameras, you know, tips specifically for catalytic converters, and then I can't remember the other one. But just so that, like, we have something we can, you know, disperse amongst our network and our social media pages so residents can take a look at that. I think I, I had a couple people message me about the hidden camera when it was on the news. So I think just now that it's out there, we want to make sure our residents are aware. And just tips for general, general safety, as you mentioned, like maybe think about parking somewhere where there's lighting, you know, check your surroundings. One of the big ones that I've been hearing a lot, too, among concern, mostly around my female friends, is a lot of videos on social media circulating about being careful where you park and like if there's a van parked next to you and if you find something on your car, like, don't even get in your car, go somewhere else. So if there's tips and tricks for that, I think that would be extremely helpful. And lastly, Harbor and Trask, because everybody knows is the bane of my existence for the last several years. And it's not just isolated to that specific area, although I know that we did have a dentist office come and speak specifically to that. But it's the Motel Six. It's now the car wash and that empty lot behind the car wash. It is all of the Caltrans freeway entrances and exits, the Denny's area, the vacant Love property that's been vacant for as long as I can remember. I mean, all of these little areas specifically around that intersection are recipes for disaster. And so, whatever we can do just to make sure, you know, the fact, I think I've texted you before where I've seen someone, what, what I believe to be doing drugs, like, right in broad daylight on the corner of the intersection. And it's just like kids are walking by, going and coming from school or sport activities. And this is, it's really disappointing to see. And then the increase of graffiti all along Clinton, by the liquor store, Enterprise, where I've complained multiple times, but also still that Haster-Chapman area between my district and Councilmember Stephanie Klavenstein's district is still a pain in the butt, as well as where that Bonds, that pavilion where Bonds is located off of Haster and Chapman as well. So there's a lot of little hotspots and I know that I've spoken to other officers regarding gang activity in that area. And I know that my district, sort of the top, you know, borders, it, my entire district borders Anaheim, Orin, and Santa Ana. So kind of just embedded by all the other cities and things come in, things come out. And so it's, it's kind of hectic when you're getting calls from, from top to the bottom. And it's several different cities impacting ours as well. Not that ours doesn't impact others, but whatever can be done, I know that you guys are doing that effort right now specifically for that location on Harbor and Trask and Chapman and Gilbert. So I, I appreciate you listening to our constituents and to our various complaints. Thank you for all the hard work.
Anyone else?
Real quick, I wanted to say personally, thank you, Chief Almar, for concentrating on these areas, like in Councilmember Wayne Penalosa's area and then especially the Chapman and Gilbert. You know, we heard the constituents and we, we moved on it. So we're, and we're still moving on it. And I appreciate all the work you guys have done because I hear about it every day from people that live over there. And also the city manager and the staff and everyone that's helped with that and we'll just keep working on it. But yeah, thank you so much for that. Appreciate it.
Councilmember.
Thank you very much, Chief, for the presentation. I think it's important for the community to be able to see the work that's being done and to see it in front of them with the slideshow is very, very helpful. One thing that I think comes to mind as well is it's important for the residents to see the synergy and the teamwork that it takes between all these different departments, working collectively, collectively and collaboratively to find solutions. So I think that's an important message to get out to the public as well. We appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you so much because I actually ride the corner where I live. Every time people ask me what do I do, I said, "Right the corner of Chapman and Gilbert." And that's now people recognize with graffiti and empty building. So it keep getting worse. I will see many email and phone call from the resident asking, "What can we do?" And I know that last council meeting, I mentioned that a nurse actually went in that area and tried to pick up trash and this was her code. But thank you for taking proactive action to do something about it. And when you, you know, you have activity doing something about it, I would love to tag along and, you know, to see the work that you guys do, but also want to see what can we do to help. So thank you.
I think that's it. We're just gonna call.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just be echoing what you guys said, so.
Call for the vote, please. Yeah. Oh, no vote? Okay. Oh, okay, we're not good. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, so I guess we're just gonna go around the room. Councilmember, podium?
Well, first and foremost, Fourth of July is coming. I got my Fourth of July tie on here. Have a safe, happy Fourth of July. Enjoy the festivities, enjoy your families, but be safe, be safe. Use some common sense. You know, we talked a little bit about swimming pool safety and especially with small kids and stuff like the last meeting. And, you know, just remember, if you're gonna be having a party and drinking, somebody needs to be sober and watching that pool. So have a safe Fourth of July. We had a, one speaker- Uh, we had a, one speaker tonight, it's a record, I think we only had one speaker, Mr. Leelis, and he's still here. Um, he talked about Ninth Street and the speed limit, and quite frankly, I kind of agree with him. I, you know, for years, working with LAPD, we would have to go out, um, we'd send the motors out, and we'd do assessments on these streets, and you have to reevaluate them every, um, I think it was every two years at the time, and that eighty-five percent rule came into play. And uh that was a state law that kind of guided you on, um, the police departments on where that needed to be. I was not aware of this new law that um that pretty much negates that, and a lot gives the cities a little more Yeah, a little more discretion, I guess, and and honestly, you know, maybe that street is a little fast at that speed limit, so I'm I'm hopeful that staff could reach out and re-look at that. I don't know if our staff was even aware, and I don't even know if that actually is a new law.
We are aware, but it's not discretionary, you do have to um commission a traffic study and justify uh the reduction, uh, so we are.
We didn't have to justify the increase.
Yes, you'll, well, the increase was required because it was speed trap, um, it was to prevent speed traps, right? Um, and so you, in order to change the speed limit, in order, in order to be able to write citations, police officer being able to write citations for speeding, we had to have a five-year study to show that the streets were at the eighty-fifth percentile. Otherwise, the law said it was a speed trap, and then all those citations would be dismissed by the court. That's why we had the eighty-fifth percentile, so that our police officers, traffic officers can enforce the speed limit.
But at the same time.
So in order to change, uh, according to the new law, we do need that study, and staff was looking at the areas where the study, it it is not free, it, we have to hire consultants to do that, and so.
Can we use the five years previous of data that we have, or do we have to start fresh with this new eighty-five percent?
We have to start fresh, because the old data is based on the eighty-fifth percentile, not on the.
So it's gonna take at least five years to do this, is what you're telling me?
Not necessarily, not necessarily, uh, I think in the next budget cycle, you can direct the staff to set aside some money, the council can approve money to to do the studies, yes.
Okay, well, you know, when that time comes around, I'm hopeful that uh it'll be a checkmark or in the box, you can remind us that, because quite frankly, I think that is a little fast for that, and you do have single-family homes right there, and people speeding by, I know this is a, I think it's a, isn't it your?
It's between, well, it's between ours.
Okay, so it's right on the.
Two's on one side and four's on the other.
Okay, so you guys probably are gonna deal with it more than I will, but I think that probably is a little fast, in my opinion, and I think maybe we should take the public comment to heart and and kind of look at that a little better. And with that being said, that's all I have, happy Fourth of July, everyone.
Thank you.
And I'll just echo, you know, please have a safe Fourth of July. Um, I'll add, George brought up the swimming pool issue, which is is a big deal, make sure you have a lifeguard there or somebody watching the pool. Also, if you're gonna be drinking, uh, partaking, you know, and you're travel, if you're gonna be driving, don't, don't drive, uh, get an Uber or have someone else drive, it's not worth it. There will be extra patrols for DUI checks, it's not worth it, and, um, you know, it's just not worth it. Um, so enjoy your Fourth of July, if, and another thing I wanted to add on the crime report and the chief, one thing I wanted to add, because it's, this happened to my daughter a while back, if you, you're at a gas station these days, all right, the days, the times have changed. If you're at a gas station at night, or maybe any time of the day, um, get out, maybe pump your gas, get in your car, lock your door, or lock your door, or take your keys with you, even if you're standing outside the car, put the keys in your pocket, don't leave them in the ignition in your car, because somebody can just jump in your car and go. If their keys are in your pocket, they're not gonna be able to do that, and maybe you can run away the other direction, don't try to confront them, just run away and go into the store. But anyway, that happened to my daughter at around midnight at an AMPM, and luckily, she was cognizant enough, instead of pumping her gas, when she got out of the car, she saw different people approaching from different angles, she got back in the car and drove away, thank God. So, anyway, keep those things uh in your mind. Thank you, have a great Fourth.
Thank you, council member Klaufenstein.
Thank you very much, yeah, I hope everybody has a wonderful and safe Fourth of July. Um, I wanted to just remind people to dump and drain, there's standing water, my, my vector message that I give constantly, but it bears repeating, uh, the weather's heating up, it's kind of humid out, mosquitoes are loving this weather and this time of year, so dump and drain, it's very simple, but it's very effective, and it's appropriate outreach message for this time of year. Um, we unfortunately in Garden Grove get hit with typhus uh more regularly than other cities. Um, so please be mindful, try to uh get some flea and tick medication for dogs, cats. We have a lot of animals, raccoons and possums and different creatures in our yards, and they carry uh infected uh fleas, which then land on our cats, which then come inside and potentially bite us, and on goes the problem, so just things to be mindful of, especially as the weather heats up, the bugs love the heat. Uh, and then finally, our Garden Grove Community Foundation concert series is well underway. We have a concert this week, the twenty-seventh, on Main Street, the Smoke and Cobras. It's gonna be a wonderful family event, so please grab your chairs and come down to Main Street and enjoy a concert provided by the Community Foundation, thank you.
Thank you. Um, one, I know there was a meeting in my district, I think on Thursday, regarding a HUD community meeting up on a Clinton, if I could get someone from staff to give me an update on the outcome of that meeting, I wasn't able to attend, but I'm very curious. Um, want to wish everyone a happy Fourth, please be safe, and if you can avoid using fireworks, please do. And I want to wish, uh, council baby Penelope Penalosa a happy sixth month.
Thank you, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and members of the city council, just an update on the navigation center. We are three weeks into opening our um Central Cities Navigation Center, and I'm pleased to report that we have sheltered five individuals and five pets, and um it's been a learning journey for staff to support our service provider, and uh we are on our way to filling our navigation center, so I just wanted to give you an update on that. And I I know, um, I've received direction from the council to provide periodic updates from departments, um, you've just recently heard from Chief Alfar relating to crime prevention um highlights, and so our next highlight, I'll be working with Deputy Director Sam Kim to bring an update relating to pavement, our infrastructure, and some alley updates, so that'll be coming. Thank you.
Thank you, um, city attorney.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Thank you, um, city clerk, no, okay, um, I have two quick thing. So, uh, one that, um, couple, last week, I actually went to the AAPI event, um, in behalf of our city. It was amazing, uh, event, um, throughout the day, there was, um, of course, a lot of, um, leader, elective officer from, of course, the AAPI, also Hispanic and um African-American were there too, and they spoke, um, the one thing that really impressed you is that everybody was there, they, a lot of them were the first, uh, whatever that is, that they they pushed through the um, the ceiling to be there, and so, um, I, one thing that I took back and I want to pass it on to our city staff, they have some of the um amazing program for youth, um, to encourage them for leadership program, and those are, they give a scholarship and things like that, so I will pass it on to Lisa, and uh maybe we could pass around for everyone to get information. The second thing is about the graduation, so um our council member um came here right after the graduation um from our city, we have more than forty graduate, and um so I just want to, of course, and, you know, in behalf of our city, wish them the best, but also we hope that they're gonna bring their talent, their skill, and their experience to come back and, you know, do the great thing for our city, so that way we will have a better place to live and, you know, a better place that they could cherish for the rest of their life. Um, I think that's it, happy July Fourth, and so let's see, the the following, uh, we're gonna adjourn the meeting, right, to the next regular meeting on July ninth at six-thirty. Thank you so much.